Discussing strategies relative to collective bargaining and strategies relative to the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Any announcements?
Well, Chairman Waschinsky and Mr. Kleckner and I joined the Brookline and Newton Rotary Clubs today for a -- they do a Thanksgiving lunch every year to get people psyched up for the big football game between Newton North and Brookline High. I think we're the Buffalo Bills in that matchup, but we'll hope for the best.
We should note that the game is in Brookline this year. It's at Parsons Field at 10:00 a.m., so everybody who's in town and interested is encouraged to attend.
It's always a great game and a lot of fun.
I'll be there.
Yeah, I'm --
I'll be taking attendance, so we'll see how many people show up.
I'm always cooking, so I don't get far away from the stove. But anyway, I just do want to mention that the Rotary's clubs do tremendous good work and support many of our charitable endeavors around town. I know they give some money to the Senior Center every year and various other good projects, so I appreciate their efforts.
I'll -- any other announcements?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm one of the co-chairs of the Open Space Planning Committee, and we had our first kickoff meeting yesterday. It was very well attended. We're going to be working on updating the open space plan for the town. I just want to mention that it was a large turnout, especially from people in the Amory Park neighborhood.
Amory Park neighborhood.
Lot of good ideas, lot of, you know, concerns expressed, but I think in general, the meeting was a very, very good opportunity for the community and for the committee to think through how we're going to proceed on addressing some of the issues that maybe tangentially but still are relevant to the open space plan, so.
Okay. And I'll just note for the public that we have a pretty heavy December coming up. We have two important public hearings. One is on the 3rd of December where we're having a public hearing jointly with the school committee in this room at 7:30, a week from this Thursday, a week from Thanksgiving, regarding the ninth school. And I -- we've been talking about how to format it, and I think we're going to start it off with kind of a summary of where we are and the process to date and summarize what we've heard to date from the public. So I view that as kind of a check-in for the public, and we've also been refining our thinking on the process from this point forward, so that'll -- we'll be talking about that. So that should be a very interesting hearing. I suspect it'll be well-attended. And then on the 8th of December, I think it's the 8th, we'll be having a public hearing on the registered marijuana dispensary proposal at the Brookline Bank site, so that should be another very well-attended hearing. So with that, let's get into our calendar unless anyone else wants to say something. I see none. So let's hit the minutes. We have two minutes, two sets of minutes before us, November 10th and November 17th. I have some corrections on the 10th. Some of you may have--
I do as well, yeah.
I had given some corrections previously on the 10th.
Right. Anyone have any corrections on the 17th? That was the right before town meeting.
Yeah, I have no corrections. I gave my November 10th corrections.
Yeah, I don't have any on the 17th. So I'll take a -- so I'll do a motion for the 10th as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and I'll move acceptance of the November 17th minutes. All those in favor, Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The next item is the question of approving and executing a lease agreement with Al Lam Tui, trustee of Coolidge Webster Realty Trust for the lease of 30 Webster Street during the Devotion School project for K's, grades K to eight.
K to four.
K to four, huh. I read it wrong. Mr. Bukite? Superintendent Connolly, welcome. Don't fight over the podium.
We're here to update you on the solution to what we hope will facilitate the Devotion School construction project. As you know, the renovation and expansion of the Devotion School from a fourth-section, 800-plus student school to a five-section, 1,000-plus student school is a very complex project. It was originally planned as a two-phase project. That meant Phase 1 would begin July 2016, and for the first 18 months, we would have the grades 5 through 8 off-site at the old Lincoln School. But grades K to 4 would remain on-site in the school during construction. The first phase would -- they'd build what they call the Babcock Wing, and the K-4 students would be in the Stedman Street side of the building. And once the Babcock Wing was completed, the kids would move into that new wing, and then the construction company would start the second phase, which is the Stedman Street side of the building. This was a very complex project. It was going to take at least 42 months. The start date was July 2016. The end date was December 2019. From the very beginning, we felt that was not in the best interest of the project or the kids, and so for a year, last year, Peter Rowe investigated every possibility of finding a location to move the K-4 students off-site. We contacted neighboring towns with offline schools. Nothing seemed to be available. We did come up with two options. One was the rent, the lease of an eight-story building right in Coolidge Corner, the old Coolidge House, and the construction company we hired also suggested that we could potentially build a 27-room modular school in the rear of the Devotion School during the construction phase. So both those sites, both those options to get the kids out of the school were considered. After some debate, it was felt that the best option was to move the kids totally off-site and to go with the 30 Webster Street lease. It was felt that this was the best option because, of course, it got the kids off-site. With the kids on-site, there was always a possibility of unexpected delays, complications, distractions, and we really wanted this project to go as smoothly as possible, so by moving the kids off-site, we feel we're in the best position to have that happen. It was also less disruptive, and also we were concerned about the parking and the traffic impact on that neighborhood. That Stedman Street, Beale Street neighborhood is already very congested as it is. You can imagine with a major construction project with kids still being on-site, it would have been very, very difficult. So we entered into negotiations to lease this 30 Webster Street property. We feel it's a very, very viable solution. Many of our building department officials were directly involved. We spent many days on-site, taking measurements, looking at the possibilities, and we have now developed a lease that we feel is, meets all of our needs. This is the site. It is this site right here. This is 30 Webster Street, right behind the Verizon building on Marriam Street. We're right now hoping that we can use Webster Street for some parent suit and drop-off and also use Marriam Street for some of the other parent suit and drop-off. The possibility of maybe using the Verizon parking lot with a fenced-in area that gives the walk-through to get to the back of the 30 Webster Street property. And that way, we will have a less smoother traffic flow during the school period.
Has that been worked out with Verizon yet?
Verizon, remember their regional manager? He is supportive in the process of spending paperwork when we have to go to the real estate division.
Okay.
So it's still being worked out. The other important development is we have been able to work out some parking arrangements with the Marriott Hotel next door to provide about 15 parking spaces for staff. We'll also contact the shopping shop just around the corner, and they have verbally said they'll allow us to use 12 of their parking spaces. Those 27 parking spaces will allow us to use the rear parking lot of 30 Webster Street as a dedicated playground area for kids, so that's a real plus. So 30 Webster Street, a third building, 27 parking space area will be a playground. Playground is surrounded by a cinder-blocked wall, so it'll be safe and contained. The eight stories, we can work out ideally, the first floor would be the large lobby area, principal's office, secretary's office, special ed. office, health room, teacher work area along the first floor. The second floor, we get, the Devotion School is a five-section school, so we have five sections of each grade level. And this design allows us to put a grade level on each floor. So the second floor would be the five kindergarten classrooms, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. It also has several other spaces reduced for specialists and support staff. Second floor would be kindergarten. Third floor would be first grade. Fourth floor would be second grade. The fifth floor would be a specialty area and would be a multi-purpose area. Gym, music, library, multi-purpose room would be on the fifth floor. This would allow the kids to come up two flights for these corner areas, or the kids third, fourth grade to go out two flights. Next floor would be your third grade. Seventh floor would be your fourth grade. And the eighth floor is a very, very track, a very functional cafeteria with a full operational kitchen, so that would become our cafeteria area. We're thinking at this time, we'd probably use a cafeteria for grades 3 and 4 and have them just come up two floors. And we use the fifth floor multi-purpose room for the grades 1 and 2, so no one's going more than two floors to go to cafeteria with us and some of the special areas. We feel this is a very, a very doable project, and at this point, the build-out cost to transform this assisted living building to a temporary 25-classroom school for K-4 is about $1.5 million. The owner will be responsible for that entire cost. That's an estimated cost, and we've passed that out, you have it before you. The lease for the building will be $4 million for a three-year lease, plus we will pay $750,000 towards the build-out costs. So the lease is for $4,750,000, which covers approximately half of the build-out cost. If the cost exceeds $1.5 million, that will be the responsibility of the owner. The building is approximately 75,000 square feet, and if you factor in the 4.7 million plus, we also will be paying the taxes during that three-year period, the total cost is about $5.4 million. So per year, it's roughly $1.8 million. That $1.8 million divided by the 75,000 square feet comes out to about a $23 square foot cost, which is a very competitive lease charge. For example, 62 Harvard Street, which we're renting for the Pierce School, we're paying about 30--
Thirty.
High 30s, yeah. High 30s a square foot. So we found a very ideal location for this school in the same neighborhood as Devotion School at a very competitive rental charge, and we, I keep telling the parents, it's not a school, but we feel we can transform this building into a very workable school for that two-year period. So we asked, the school committee has approved the lease earlier today. The building commission approved it just about an hour ago. We asked the board of selectmen to approve this lease so we can move forward. The build-out schedule you have there, if the lease is signed tonight during the month of December into January would be further design work and construction document work. February to May would be the construction schedule. We would get occupancy of the building May 16th. That would give us really June, July, and August to move the furniture and equipment and supplies, and we would have this school ready for operation in September 2016.
Selectman Franco.
So I know you said you'd secure 27 parking spaces, a combined 27 parking spaces between two sites. Do you anticipate that that's enough to meet the demand of the school?
No, absolutely not. For example, the Devotion School right now has 65 parking spaces in those neighboring streets, and we have 55 parking spaces in the garage, which are loose. So right now, we have a need for about 100-plus parking spaces. That 27, it just allows us to utilize the parking lot for playground, where we hope to go before the building commission or the transportation commission and discuss parking and traffic flow arrangements over the next few months.
And there'll also be a conversation with the transportation board about pickup and drop-off areas on--
That's right. That's right. And the possibility really is twofold. If we can't get the Marion Street drop-off site, if we don't get access to the Verizon property for that to work, we're looking at the Central Street parking area as kind of a drop-off site, and with a traffic supervisor, all the kids across Beacon Street that go into the front door of the 30 Webster Street. We're trying to not use Webster Street itself, because it's a very narrow street, as a major parent drop-off site. The plus is, it's a neighborhood school, and many of the, we hope many of the students will walk to school with their parents. And also, the other plus is the existing 65 parking spaces we have around the Devotion School are also within walking distance, and so we think that's a real plus to have found a building of this magnitude so close to the existing school.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, no, I want to say on behalf of the building committee that this is something we've been supportive for a long time. It actually was a little more expensive than the modulators. The modular cost came in high, though, so the differential isn't that great, and I, we thought, I think, that the safety of having the kids off the site and also the neighbors were talking to me certainly about their concern about getting out of their neighborhood because all the trucks are going to be there for the building site, and if we were also having drop-off on the back of that site, that it was going to make life very miserable for everybody. So I, we're happy this came to fruition. I want to compliment Superintendent Connolly, who worked very hard on this even before he was superintendent in his role as, with the Devotion School, and Tony Giggly and John Bukite, who worked on this, and Mel got everybody together from our building commissioner and others to go in and see exactly what we would need to have done to that building so that people could move forward negotiating with the lease. So it was, it was an effort that everyone was pulling together on to make it happen.
In order to continue what Nancy just said, that roughly that $4.75 million in cost to rent and build out that building, because we're reducing the project schedule from 42 months to 25 months, it's projected we'll save about 80% of that charge in the cost of building the Devotion School. So the bulk of this cost will come from the savings to the construction cost of the new Devotion School.
All right. I'll just make one comment, you know, in relation to the ninth school discussion with the old Lincoln site potentially being on the table as a potential ninth school. This, to me, is one way to quantify the worth of the Lincoln School as swing space, and we certainly have it programmed out for at least the next 10 to 15 years, and this is the kind of money that, that site saves us. So that's quite substantial.
And Neil also raises a good point because we're hoping to use the old Lincoln School to address some of the overcrowding conditions at the high school, and the high school may need that building as early as September 2018. And so by moving to 30 Webster Street, we now believe we can complete the project at Devotion by 2018 and free up the old Lincoln School to potentially be used by the high school a year or two earlier than it would have been ready for. So that's another side benefit.
For Mr. Bukite, I noticed in the draft that we got the, all the exhibit references in the lease were empty, so I presume in the final, that's been filled in, and all the Ts have been crossed and the Is dotted?
Yes, we were finalizing some of the exhibits. I did send something to the selectman's office yesterday afternoon. I don't know if electronic format, I don't know if it ultimately arrived in your inbox, but apologize for that. But everything did get attached and worked out.
Okay, so when, when we sign it, it'll have all the right stuff, right?
Yes. Three there that I--
If we sign it. Before we vote, I say if. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Selectman Green?
I have one comment. This looks like a exciting idea. It also looks like what we call an urban school. So maybe this will enable people to sort of think of that concept as we look at a ninth school, or look at developing a ninth school. I'm not in favor necessarily of an urban school, but I think that, you know, it's something that can't be taken off the table, and, you know, this may be a way of just seeing how that works. I mean, it's not going to tie up in terms of timing for decision-making on the ninth school, but, you know, just putting the idea out there and showing how it works, you know, may be a useful way for people to begin to think about that idea.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, so I will move, put my glasses on so I can read what I'm moving, that we approve a lease agreement with Al Tomtuli, I'm sure I'm screwing that name up, trustee of Coolidge Webster Realty Trust for the lease of 30 Webster Street during the Devotion School project for grades K to 4, and if I did mispronounce the name, I apologize. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, question of approving a contract amendment number 10 in the amount of 500, a credit of $552,268 to the contract with HMFH Architects in connection with the change to single-phase construction for the Edward Devotion School renovation and additions project. So this is, this is one of the effects of doing what we just did.
Indeed, it is.
Mr. Giggly?
Indeed, it is. The, as Dr. Connolly mentioned, the period of construction gets reduced from approximately 35 to 40 months to 25 months with the change in approach to single-phase construction. And anticipating that that could perhaps be a priority, the building commission negotiated with the architect at the time of the extension of their contract this amount, keeping in mind that that may be realized, and in fact, it is realized. So this is what the contract amendment is for.
Any questions, comments? Okay. I see none, so I will therefore move that we approve the contract amendment number 10 in the amount of, in the amount of a credit of $552,268 to the contract with HMFH Architects in connection with the change to single-phase construction for the Edward Devotion School renovation and additions project. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. And you're up here again, Mr. Giggly?
Yes, change order number one to the contract with Shawma Design and Construction, the amount of $38,518.39, and I mentioned this together because they're related. Contract amendment number 11 to the contract with HMFH for added geotechnical work and traffic study work in the amount of $15,434. The change order for Shawma and the geotechnical portion of the contract amendment with HMFH is part of an ongoing effort to identify latent and/or existing conditions that could potentially result in change orders and/or delays during construction. And as you know, the part of the work here is to save and renovate, rehabilitate the 1913 building, and that leads to a level of complexity and a tear-down of the other wings and the shoring that's needed for that building. So this is a culmination of stuff that happened basically over the summer while school was out on to test footings, underpinning, look at hidden masonry walls and structural framing configuration in the 1913 building, additional hazmat sampling and documentation, again, in all in an effort to stave off potential change orders and delays when we get in construction.
You got any bad surprises?
Well, we found another location in the garage of hydro, of oil or gas in the garage, and we believe it may be related to the gas and oil separator, but we just don't know that. But it's better that we were able to find that now than when the garage comes down so that we can address that. The, we did document multiple layers of vinyl asbestos tile. It's not an issue as long as, you know, it's not disturbed and it's there, but once again, that is a thing that can be a change order item and a very costly one during construction. So, and the, this, this work informed the work of the structural engineer and other design disciplines so that we just are better informed.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I will just say, I was the selectman on the Runcle School project, and there we did keep finding things because that there had been a building previously on part of the site that had been demolished, but this area is similarly complex, so I think it's a good thing, and I will say, I appreciate Tony's devotion to this, but I will also say my impression of Shawma has been that they are really trying to identify anything that might cause a problem and streamline the process so we'll stay on schedule, so I think it's good.
Okay, any other questions? I'll therefore move that we approve the change order and contract amendment in connection with the Edward Devotion School renovation additions projects. Change order number one, exploratory work materials, Shawma Design and Construction, $38,518.39, and contract amendment number 11, geotechnical and traffic study for HMFH at $15,434 even. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next one is you too, Mr. Giggly?
Indeed, it is.
Okay.
This is for the structural improvements to fire station number one, the traffic coating. This is to add line striping on the apparatus bay in the amount of $610.37. It was not-- It was not included in the contract documents, and it's needed for properly getting the vehicles in and out of the station. And the good part about it is, is that it's integral to the floor system so that it is not likely to chip, fade, or otherwise disappear over the years.
Questions, comments? Therefore...
Seems like a good time.
Right. I'll move that we approve change order number one in the amount of six hundred and ten dollars and thirty-seven cents. This is the smallest thing all night. For work performed by Contractors Network in connection with fire station number one, structural improvements project. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And the next item is change order for two thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars for work completed by Systems Electrical Services in connections with fire station five and six life safety improvements. Mr. Wigley again?
Yes, indeed. This again is station five and six life safety improvements. It's the, the last two stations where we're doing these life safety improvements, so that's the end of that program, which is good. The work included an all paging system in the both stations. And at station number five, it was found that there were dead areas and areas that were not covered. So the engineer recommended in consultation with the fire department, four additional Z-tron speakers with wiring and conduits, and it's two thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars for the best and optimal coverage in the station.
Questions, comments? I see none, so therefore I'll move that we approve change order number three in the amount of two thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars for work performed by Systems Electrical Services, Inc. in connection with fire station five and six life safety improvements. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wigley.
Good evening.
Uh, the next item up is Mr. Ditto. Though Mr. Ditto isn't an item. He's covering an item, the question for proving work. I'm getting giddy. In the amount of, uh, work, extra work order number one in the amount of ninety-three thousand, one hundred and one dollars and seventy cents for work to be completed by De Alessandro Corp. in connection with sewer system rehabilitation. Mr. Ditto?
Back in October, the DPW got a phone call, and it was a complaint or a sewer order at the intersection of Park and Beacon Street. We sent our sewer crew up and sure enough, there was surcharging in the line that runs down Park Street from Beacon to Marion.
Surcharging? What's that mean?
Means it was blocked and the sewage was backing up in the manhole.
Okay.
Luckily, we got it before it got too far. We then brought our vector truck out and tried to jet the line. In doing so, we found pieces of clay coming back at us, so we knew we were in trouble at that point in time. We cleaned out the best we could, and then we subsequently put our TV camera in, and sure enough, the eight-inch clay pipe, which is approximately a hundred and fifteen years old, instead of being round, was oblong. And it was, its days are definitely numbered. So at that point, we contacted our sewer rehabilitation contractor for this year, which is De Alessandro, asked him to prepare a price to remove and replace the existing eight-inch sewer with an eight-inch PVC pipe. Thing that makes this contract, this project difficult is the pipe's down thirteen feet. And not only is it down thirteen feet, but it's underneath the storm drain. So in order to replace this pipe, we have to take out the storm drain, remove the sewer pipe, put the sewer pipe back in, and then put the storm drain. That price of ninety-three thousand dollars and change is a very reasonable price. Both the commissioner and I went over it item by item, and we feel it's a fair price and recommend approval from the board.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I just had a question about this, because I thought we'd done that thing where we sent cameras through all our sewer pipes? Or was that our water pipes that we did that? I was surprised this one was falling apart, because why hadn't we?
Yeah, this is one we just never got to. There wasn't any indication in our records that this was a problem. So it just came out of nowhere, basically.
So when will the work be done? Because the winter is approaching?
Yeah, De Alessandro anticipated about nine working days to complete the project. We're going to try to do it this year. We'll sit down with them tomorrow, probably not tomorrow, actually probably Monday, and find out what his work schedule is, what, what he has for forces to put at this, and can he actually complete it in the nine days?
So it's on Park Street?
It's about three hundred and fifty feet on Park Street from Beacon to Marion.
I remember maybe six months ago, there was some emergency work that took place just east of Webster Street, on Beacon Street. Was that related to the sewer line there, or was it water?
East on Beacon Street?
I think it was on Beacon Street. We, I remember, we had to shut down Beacon Street over a holiday weekend.
I think that might have been water.
Okay. I was just, where I was going with it was, was this at all connected? But it sounds like it wasn't, so.
Yeah, let me ask a question that's designed to educate me on something. PVC pipe, how durable is that? And how long would that last in this type of a setting?
It's very strong, stronger than clay, and it'll last, it'll last a lifetime. We actually use a, kind of a form of a PCV, PCV pipe when we actually reline, reline the existing sewer mains. So it's, it's the material we prefer to use at this point.
So I have a practical question. The last clause in the second paragraph of the memo says that the sewer, the buildings that are serviced by the sewer are not, not getting sewer service at this point, that the, the, the buildings are without sewer service. So I'm wondering if we've remedied that problem and, and if we have?
Where's it going?
Exactly.
Yeah, I, that's not, that's not accurate statement.
I think it says they could become blocked at any time. But that does give me some concern if these guys aren't able to do this before the winter because...
They're, they're very good. I'm confident they'll be able to do this.
So are they going to dig a thirteen-foot trench?
Yep, they're going to inch their way down the street. And they, you've seen what they call the trench boxes? The big, massive boxes they drop down. And then they have to work within that box, and then slide the pipe in, slide the trench block down, slide the pipe in. It's kind of tedious.
Okay.
What exciting.
Depending on your outlook, I guess. Kind of have to do it, so let's, I'll therefore move that we approve the extra work order number one in the amount of ninety-three thousand, one hundred and one and seventy cents for work to be completed by De Alessandro Corporation in connection with the contract, sewer system rehabilitation. All those in favor, selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And we have one temporary wine and malt liquor license to the Chamber of Commerce, Lisa Wizell, board member in connection with a holiday party to be held on December third, two thousand and fifteen, from six to nine PM at the Brookline Teen Center. The police department has reviewed the application, and it appears to be in order. So I will therefore move that we issue the temporary wine and malt license to the Chamber of Commerce, Lisa Wizell, board member in connection with the holiday party to be held on December third from six to ten PM at the Brookline Teen Center. All those in favor, selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, moving on to our main calendar. So the first item up is the question of approving a conditional offer, offer of employment to firefighter, as a firefighter, to Walter Francis. Chief Ford?
Good evening. How's everyone this evening?
Okay.
I'm here before you tonight to seek approval, to give Walt Francis a conditional offer of employment. Walter Francis became a firefighter in Springfield, Mass., actually, in two thousand and two. He was laid off in oh-three. And he became a Brookline firefighter through that layoff process and reemployment process in January of two thousand and four. He had many, many opportunities through the years to go back to Springfield and chose to stay here. He recently, his wife had an opportunity, he thought long and hard, and I know it was with heavy heart, he made a decision to move his family to Colorado for an opportunity for his wife. Things have changed, as he told me, they do often through life, and he's coming back home to Massachusetts and would like to once again be a Brookline firefighter, and, and he's assured me he'd like to be one until his retirement days. Walt left on very good terms. He was an excellent firefighter, very, very well thought of, a perfect gentleman, and, and just a great guy to hang around, be around in the stations. I've actually had several requests from offices requesting he be assigned to them should he come back. So that's why I'm here tonight, asking that you approve that conditional offer of employment. Here's still going to have to have a physical and go for the path test like we do with all our new hires. And, but other than that, he should be ready to go back to work with no training, right back into the company. So that'd be good for us, our overtime, for the community.
I hope this will be a lesson to the others not to leave.
Might be that, the grass greener thing?
Any other questions, comments? Okay, therefore I'll move that we approve a conditional offer of employment as a firefighter to Walter Francis. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay, so now we have a public hearing on the petition of Verizon of New England for permission to locate a utility pole within the following public way, Clark Road, to relocate pole, a pole approximately seven hundred, five hundred and seventy-nine and a half, five inches from the center line of Cotswold Road, a distance of thirteen feet to the east. Does that, does that make sense what I just read?
What this is, this locates where this pole's being moved from, so...
Is that a, a, a geographic citation?
No, it's just a, it's an architect's way of giving you a, a distance.
Okay.
This pole is right now at five hundred and seventy-nine feet, five inches from Cotswold Road.
Got you, got you. So now you're moving at thirteen? Got you, got you.
So it just ties it down to start off with.
Okay.
So this is to accommodate a new curb cut for a driveway at two fifty-five Clark Road. There's an existing pole right in the middle of where the pole's driveway is to go. The statutory seven-day notices went out to all the abuddhas. The construction, or the moving of the pole will only take one day. There'll be no interruption of service, no shutdowns, normal workdays, normal work hours.
Is there any, will there be any tearing up of the street?
No, this is all on the sidewalk.
And it's just Verizon and N-Star that have lines on this pole? Do you know if there's any lines on there that aren't being used that we can take this opportunity to get off and relieve some crowding on the pole?
I didn't check that out.
Uh, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public wish to...
Are you, are you here on this matter, sir?
I'm not.
Okay.
I don't see any members of the public wanting to speak on this matter. Any other questions, discussion? Yeah?
Yeah, I just did have a question. So isn't there an existing driveway to this house?
You know, this was, there's two new houses built in that, in that location. So there was an existing, and I think that's, is an existing curb cut, and that's for the, the house. There's two houses being built, and that serves as one of them. This one here needs its own.
Okay.
Okay, therefore I'll move that we grant permission to relocate a utility pole within the following public way, based on the petition of Verizon of New England, Clark Road, relocate pole eight slash seventy-six approximately five hundred and seventy-nine feet, five inches from the center line of Cotswold Road, a distance of thirteen feet to the east. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Moving on, we, we have a public hearing on the petition of Crown Castle NG East LLC for permission to construct and a location for such a line of conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein under the following public way. Longwood Avenue, conduit southwesterly from pole ten slash twenty near Kent Street, approximately eight feet to a new vault, and approximately seven feet from the new vault to existing manhole thirty-nine slash one-eleven. That's very descriptive to me, not, but very precise. Mr. Ditto?
So this request is from Crown Castle. They, they bought out Next G, if that rings any bells. But this is to increase the capacity of the distributed antenna system, or DAS, as you may know it, in the town of Brookline. It will allow them to put another carrier on this system, which also generates new revenue for the town. Again, this was, seven-day notices were sent out to the abuddhas at the intersection of Canton Longwood. And this is a little more involved than the previous one, but still does not require any extraordinary limits on their work. So we recommend approval.
So I see the expected duration is four days. What's going to be the impact on the neighborhood?
I think, you know, it's not starting until nine o'clock, which is past the peak hour at that intersection, so there will be some, some generalization of traffic, and that should be the worst case.
So lanes aren't going to be blocked?
No.
And when, when do you see the work starting?
Next week, probably. No, oh, I'm sorry.
Great. May please the board. Richard Shepherd, project manager, Crown Castle, be happy to...
Sure.
This particular connection, as Mr. Ditto indicated, does allow us to expand the existing network within the city. What we have now is one carrier on most of the locations, and this is adding a second carrier, Verizon Wireless, to increase their LTE coverage throughout, which is a good thing. It's not so much for actual, its capacity, its bandwidth improvements. This ties into a, the Verizon system of which we're releasing a piece of conduit all the way from the hub in, near Fenway Park, and coming up Brookline Ave., and then onto this location. At this stage in time, the conduit has not been rotted and roped, meaning it hasn't been a hundred percent verified that we're able to get through the Verizon conduit. And it is not the intention of Crown to build this until that acceptance has been achieved. And so we are not planning on building this until after the, after the winter, so sometime for, in the beginning of the springtime, around April.
I would encourage you to try and schedule it sometime around school vacation week, because the traffic will be less, if that's possible.
It is possible. It's possible.
Yeah. Any questions from the board?
I just wondered what, you're digging into the street?
Mm-hmm. Placing a, a new, what, what we're doing is we're tying into the existing Verizon manhole that's in the intersection, placing a new manhole, small, a small... Placing a new manhole, small, a small manhole, and then allowing us to connect to our existing network, which is, which is on the pole right there. So we're gonna leverage the existing network, but we need, need to tie it to a, a new hub location, is what we call it.
And I'm sure Mr. Ditto has explained to you that you need to repair any asphalt that you mess up?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
This is, I guess, a question from Mr. Ditto. Selectman Heller and the rest of us have taken a, a, a strong interest in, as the streets are getting torn up, to investigate whether there are any gas leaks in, in the area and try to coordinate that work while the street's being torn up, if that's at all possible. So I have no idea whether that area has any, but. Okay.
This seems like a very short distance to go, eight feet, but it's gonna take four days. So I'm wondering why the, the duration? Are we being conservative, or is it truly gonna take four days?
It, it'll take, considering that it'll probably, it'll be scheduled probably between nine and three, and the fact that we're placing a new manhole, it's a reasonable amount of time.
This is a public hearing, so anyone from the public wish to be heard on this? I see none. Any other questions or comments from the board? I'll therefore move that we grant the petition of Crown Castle NG East LLC permission to construct and a location for such a line of conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein under the following public way. Longwood Avenue, conduit southwesterly from pole one hundred slash twenty near Kent Street, approximately eight feet to a new vault, and approximately seven feet from the new vault to existing manhole thirty-nine slash one eleven. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Now we have a number of board and commission interviews changing gears a bit. So the first, first up are two from the Economic Development Advisory Board. The first one is Susan Houston. Ms. Houston, welcome. Tell us what you've been up to. Why you want to continue?
Well, I, I'm executive director of an organization called Mass Econ. We promote Massachusetts as a place to do business. And I have also lived in Brookline for, my gosh, it could be forty years. And, you know, I'd like to continue to bring my statewide perspective to town economic development matters. Really tying the, kind of the statewide and regional initiatives to, to Brookline.
What are some of the projects that you've been involved in? And what do you see as priorities in the coming years?
Yeah, so I think Brookline could benefit from a multi-municipal kind of approach in looking at economic development. The Needham and Newton, for example, you know, have joined together with the N squared kind of initiative. And I think that there could be some interesting outcomes. You know, conversations, I think, actually have begun with the economic development staff here. And there's an appetite for regional, you know, cooperation, or multi-municipal cooperation. Of course, that comes down to, you know, specific projects and execution. But I think the framework for that is an important one, and the state is supportive of that approach as well. In terms of specific priorities, you know, Boylston Street, you know, I think certainly can benefit from and is being reviewed now by a team from MIT. And that's an area that, that I believe could benefit from additional, you know, development, bringing revenues to the town. And I think that the commercial aspect of Boylston Street really, you know, is, is ripe for upgrading. Relationships with the Longwood area, and I know we have the relationship with Children's Hospital. There are a number of areas, you know, I see the, the Van Bridge go through the town. And if you're familiar with the different transportation kind of modes that are taking, you know, workers from, you know, certain points in Brighton and Brookline down to the Innovation District and to Cambridge. I think that there are nodes here that could be open to, you know, emerging companies, you know, as well. So, you know, so those, those are a number of things that I see. And, you know, in addition, you know, our town centers, certainly, I mean, the commercial centers, you know, are always worthy of, of attention. And I'm looking forward to, I don't have the information on, you know, the, the tenant in the SS Pierce or the Walgreens.
The Walgreens, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but that's going to be, you know, very important.
Yeah, that's an important corner, yeah.
Yeah, I, I wanna just get your thoughts. I'm, I'm a little frustrated by various state policies, you know. On the one hand, developers looking at Brookline are, are finding that they get the highest return by putting in housing, and particularly forty B housing, where they can, you know, greatly override our zoning regulations. And, you know, and the, and the result is twenty percent of that is affordable, and the other eighty percent is not. But, you know, on the, the other hand, we're, we get not enough help from the state in figuring out how to school all those kids. So I, I guess, my question is, is there, is there anything we can do to make commercial development more attractive than, than this kind of forty B development?
Well, I think Brookline needs to be seen as a town where it's, I'll say, very predictable and clear in how business is done in terms of the permitting process. You know, not that our standards have to be reduced, you know, in terms of design review. I think that's, you know, clearly important. But, you know, I think we've made a good start in terms of our economic development staff. But I think that's really key. Any developer coming in, you know, wants to feel that they, that there is a high degree of predictability and that, you know, Brookline is business friendly. And so when we do have accomplishments in that area, I think we, you know, we ought to be communicating them. So some of it could relate to, and I don't have particulars here, you know, in terms of, some of it could relate to modifications perhaps in the permitting process. But I think it needs to be, Brookline needs to be considered a place where, you know, business, you know, business is welcome, essentially. And that's as much, I think, a matter of kind of predictability.
Do you think the tax shift, that, I mean, we were one of the few communities in the state that, that utilizes the tax shifting ability that we have. So what people pay for residential property, if you have commercial property, your taxes are one point seven two something at the current time for, you know, the equivalent. The tax rate is, is.
Allowing that to be a higher tax rate than residential.
Which, you know, we've, we've seen historically as a way to, to benefit homeowners, particularly lower income homeowners. But it, that, I, I don't know if you're hearing in your work on economic development in Brookline that that is a factor for people?
An impediment, you mean, for a commercial?
Yeah.
Um, I haven't, but I think that if we expand our commercial base, you know, then, you know, we may need to rely less on kind of that kind of tax shifting, you know, also. But I haven't heard that that's an impediment. You know, I think Brookline is a high-value, you know, location because of its proximity to Boston, you know, being on transit and so forth. You know, in terms of developable sites, you know, I think that we have kind of a lack of developable sites.
Yeah, we've kind of discovered that in the school process.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's, you know, that's, you know, that's a problem. So I think looking at where, you know, we might be able to have more intensive uses that, you know, are also welcomed by, you know, the neighborhoods is, you know, something we ought to be looking at.
Oh, and welcomed by the neighborhoods. We're not miracle workers.
Yeah, I mean, that's acceptable.
Yeah.
I mean, there's always the give and take.
Yeah, one of the impediments to predictability is, 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 you know, the way our zoning code is structured. If, if you look at the big projects that we've permitted in, in the last, I don't know, ten years, you know, each, each one of them has required us to get a zoning change. You know, Brookline Place, three times, the Red Cab site, twice. We had to go for zoning change at Cleveland Circle and probably, and the hotel on Webster Street. So, you know, if, if, if we can come up with a way through our zoning bylaw to, to think a little more in advance and a little more globally, that, that might help with the predictability. So as soon as you have to go to town meeting, that's a whole different.
That's a whole different story.
Process, and there's no way that can be predictable.
Yeah, yeah, agreed. I think that's, you know, that is an issue. And we might look at, you know, Framingham has a town government, and it's interesting that.
We don't know how long it'll, they'll have a town government.
That's true. I'm interested in taking a look at, okay, how is, how is Framingham dealing with some of these issues? They may have more of a, an incentive, you know, as a community that doesn't have the kinds of resources that we do. They may have more of an incentive to develop commercially, but it's one that is moving forward in that area, so.
Yeah, I, I think too, there's more of a history of, well, there's certainly more land out there.
Yep.
And there's been a history of, well, it's, it's more suburban than, than, than we are. And then you have the shopping centers and the, the old GM factory. And it's just the, you know, a history of industrial and, and large shopping centers that we just don't have the land for.
That's right, that's right.
I have two questions for you that are, I think unrelated, but I'm sure if I work hard enough, I can find a common thread. Picking up on your, your comments about your state and perhaps even regional experience. I had the opportunity, I think, last week to take a look at Jay Ash, Secretary Ash's economic development plan for the state. And my reading of it was that he seems to focus a lot on gateway cities and on extending the success that we've seen inside the one twenty-eight Beltway out to the South Coast, to Western Massachusetts, to the Worcester foothills. I'm wondering if there was anything in that plan, that draft plan, in your estimation that we in Brookline can avail ourselves of or should be excited about in terms of our townwide economic development?
I think fixing the T is one. I think the focus on transportation, you know, is, is in that plan. And I think too, the focus on key industry sectors, you know, with, you know, technology, with life sciences, I think that has a relationship to Brookline. I think you're absolutely right. There's a, you know, there is a focus on the gateway cities, and Secretary Ash himself comes from one, Chelsea. That plan, by the way, is open for comment through December third. Also, to clarify, Mass Econ is not a state entity. It's a private nonprofit. I do have a seat on that, on the board of that fifty-nine-member council. But it could be worthwhile, and it's something I'm happy to talk to Kara about in terms of commenting on that plan. That, you know, there are communities that, you know, we don't want to be neglected. And so I, I think in terms of the big picture, you know, Brookline is, you know, is, is part of it, although the focus is on helping, I think, communities that have been considered more disadvantaged.
And my second question, I think you picked up on the, the theme, and that theme is sort of life science innovation. The Boston Business Journal had a, an article today that sort of speculated about where the next life science biotech hotspot is gonna be. And they, I think, focused on Needham and up in, in Burlington. It was sort of a, a collection of disjointed sites that just seemed to have large envelopes that could be filled. I have long speculated that the Boylston Street corridor, the general area of, of Brookline Place might be an interesting place to, to, to think about some innovation space. Not necessarily wet labs, but small spaces where biotech companies, life science companies could get started, particularly because of the proximity to the LMA, where we know it's very, very congested. All the space that's being built there is for institutional use. There's no, or very little space available for rent. So wondering if you think I'm on the right track here, or I'm dead wrong, and you can set me straight.
No, I think that's a real opportunity for us in town. I, I agree with you. That proximity makes all the difference. No, no question.
All right, I'll keep evangelizing then.
Okay, I think, thank you very much, Ms. Houston.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Mr. Rain, come join the party.
You asked Susan all the good questions.
I was just thinking that, you know. So what have you been up to?
Well, I've been on EDAB so long, I've actually lost track, but it's at least fifteen years. And I think, I think only Bob Spurber and Tom Nally exceed my length of service. And I joined, I, I was recruited by the, by the selectmen at the time to join during the fight over the Webster Street Hotel, of which I was a strong citizen proponent. And I've been involved in all of the major EDAB and related issues in the town since then, as, as a, as a member of EDAB. I, I also, I've been here thirty-seven years, the last nine on Linden Street in Precinct Four, the twenty-seven before that on Auburn Place in Precinct Seven, and the last five or six years of that in town meeting. And it was a time of, of great ferment around these issues in, in town meeting. And I had, I had the pleasure of being involved in a lot of that at the time. I was, I co-chaired with Selectman Allen, the St. Aidan's Reuse Committee. And an excruciating process, the results of which I personally will always feel could have been bigger and denser, but, which I'm very proud of. And in, in these, in these recent years, all of the successes of, of the staff, and boy, we're lucky to have Kara, and, and the board that we'll see, that we'll see in construction soon or that we already see in construction, at the Red Cab site at Boylston Place, Brookline Place, rather. And been involved in all of those. I've got a particular interest, which my colleagues on, on EDAB all, all know about, which is transit-oriented development. It's what I, what I do in my day job. And when I, when I tell people from around the country that I'm from Brookline, and if they're wonky enough to actually know this, they go, "Oh, my God, streetcar suburbs." And the, the, the history of, of the town, particularly the northern half of it in which, in which I live, continues to be, you know, not only a, a model that we don't have to go invent, it's, it's how we got here in the first place, but, but, but the ongoing platform and opportunity to have walkable, sustainable, mixed-use development, to, to bring more commercial development and a mixed-use. mixed-use development, to bring more commercial development in a mixed-use context in all of our commercial districts. I completely agree with Susan that that's the core of the opportunity of the town, to grow our commercial tax base, to, and for that matter, to attract residential development that isn't of a forty B school taxing nature, is in and around our commercial districts. I also very much agree that Route Nine is, you know, you don't have to drive around town very much to realize that Route Nine is unusual and therefore an unusual opportunity.
I'm going to kind of give you a shot at my, the same question. What would you tell us as a town we could do to make a developer look at Brookline and say, I want to do something commercial there instead of a forty B?
Well, the, you know, beyond echoing what Susan and a couple of you said about predictability, and just the dogged determination of the staff to babysit projects and see them through. And, you know, I do this all over the place, and I can't, I can't overstate how important that is. I think that we, you know, I think, I think zoning in the commercial districts in a way, you know, I think, I think when there's a big unusual outlying, not physically outlying, but outlying in terms of what it is, controversial project, I'm not that sanguine about somehow anticipating that in zoning and not having to suffer through it in the town meeting process. But certainly, the more everyday kind of opportunities that we want to attract in and around the commercial districts where the most obvious thing, you know, parking relief, or at the end of the day, we know every single one of these, you know, small retenantings of a retail space is going to need parking relief, it's going to get parking relief. Maybe it's not a good example because it happens so routinely that, you know, changing it or not changing it isn't that big a deal. But I think, I think somewhere in between what we have now and the unusual set of big projects that are all, in all likelihood, are going to find their way to town meetings, individual projects, I think somewhere in between there, we can, we can make a statement in zoning about what we'd like to see, a flexible statement about what we'd like to see in the commercial districts. You know, the other thing, frankly, is to, you know, point with pride to what we've done. You know, Red Cab took a long time, partly because it was controversial, but partly because it went through a couple of business cycles. Brookline Place, controversial, but, you know, but went through arguably three business cycles. And the town has seen it through and gotten those done. And, you know, those developers stuck around because they saw the, they saw the value, the high value of the location, and they had, they had confidence, you know. I mean, those of us that were in, you know, in that process, as you already know, you know, those, those project proponents just had confidence in the town staff that they were going to be, that they were going to be guided through the process, you know, in an appropriate and effective way.
But what I'm thinking of, and Susan was mentioning the Innovation District or something, I mean, what if we said to developers, you know, who come to us saying they want to do a forty B, we'd like to encourage, what was it, biotech?
Yeah.
Or life science, yeah.
And so we'll give you something, like more density and maybe lower taxes for ten years, or something like that, if you go in the direction we want you to go in. Is that something you guys have been thinking about, or?
The, in a broad sense, yes. I mean, I would say that you're talking about an almost completely different set of developers that would do those things. It's not so much that developer X, who'll do anything, has his heart set on, you know, a hundred and twenty units of forty B and says, oh, I'll do biotech instead. It's can you make, you know, can you make a part of town, you know, where the, where the community would agree and be comfortable? And I think, I think the idea of Route Nine is a pretty intriguing one. Can you, can you take a part of town and say, you know, here's a place where we really want to encourage X, Y, and Z, and, you know, and try and, and try and see that through? You know, because, I mean, because of what Route Nine is like, it's not a place that's likely to attract big residential development, you know, certainly not as a first choice. And I think, I think the market would be looking for something that if we, if we as a town in partnership with the state, in the case of Route Nine, you know, do what needs to be done over a period of time to really, you know, at least, at least from Cypress Street into the village, you know, change the condition of that street. I mean, nobody's, I mean, the hotel was perfect because people come in and out. But anything that involves, you know, either residential or employment on a more permanent day-after-day kind of way, it's just a tough, it's a tough place to be because of what kind of, what kind of thoroughfare it is. But if, if over time, we figure out how to, you know, reposition Route Nine as a complete street, which is easy to say, not easy to do when there's a volume of traffic, that even if you're a, you know, transit-oriented development idealist like me, there's an amount of traffic that's always going to need to be on Route Nine, you know, and it comes from outside our borders, and is going outside our borders to a degree, and we can't simply, we can't simply wish it away. But if you, if you change Route Nine and do the best you can with the way the street works, and we can do dramatically better with the way the sidewalks work and look, and all the things that you think about when you reposition a sort of dense automobile, you know, oriented, not densely developed, but a densely trafficked automobile-oriented kind of strip. If we were to do all of that and say, here are the kinds of commercial or research and development activities we'd like to see on that street, I think it could be an exciting initiative.
Well, I'll just say, I think, you know, EDAB is one of our more successful boards. Their accomplishments have been many and consistent over the years. And it's been a pleasure. The times I've worked with members of EDAB, it's been an absolute pleasure. So just state that publicly. And I'm glad that you're re-upping. And same with you, Ms. Houston.
And congratulations to the new members of the board.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. We're not making appointments tonight, but you'll hear from us. Mr. Blood, Housing Advisory Board, another successful board. Tell us what you've been up to.
Not asking for money tonight.
Yeah.
Well, a lot of things are happening, as you know, forty B being one of them. I'm, I still feel like being on the HAB is fresh and exciting after twenty-something years. John Bain and I were talking at the Runcle, the Dean Park opening, which one of us has been chairing and on a board the longest in town. And I think we came to a firm conclusion, but both of us are pretty far north of twenty years. And so at the beginning, the challenge was how to get out of rent control without a lot of displacement. And there's been just very exciting chapters over the whole period of time. So it still seems like a new and exciting place to be, and something I like very much and have worked my career in as well. We have at the moment, I think, I'll call it a transition into the current chapter of where the town seems to be going in affordable housing. The ten percent goal was easy for everybody to raise a drink or a flag to for probably the last ten years, and we all signed onto it. And most of us that had taken a good look at it realized that we'll never get there. There's not the land, there's five hundred units, where would we build them, et cetera, the economics didn't work. But all of a sudden, in the last year or so, the market has changed, and the, some circumstances have changed, where we're actually within striking distance of the, of the magic ten percent. By some accounts, within as little as two, two hundred units. And the market is so strong that at least some folks on our board think that even without trying to guide and steer, we'll overshoot the ten percent, but maybe not in ways that most people would like. So with the fact that it's, that the goal is reachable, we are, we are really facing some kind of conflicting forces and challenges, both at the HAB level and your level and elsewhere, I'm sure. The first one, I think, came out in the Springtown meeting, and probably in response specific to the Crown Shield development, of housing production goals versus neighborhood protection goals. And the town meeting spoke that we wanted to achieve both, if it's possible. And the route to get there, or one route, is by having a so-called housing production plan and looking for either temporary or long-term safe harbor and protection from the, from the negative downsides of forty B. But there are some, what some people might say bitter pills to swallow if we're going to aggressively go down that route, because it still requires the production of some hundreds of units. The rental market being as strong as it is, is like having the wind at our back, because we get four, four or five times as much credit for rental under forty B than we do under, under ownership. There's a couple of other kind of contradictions or cross forces that I think we have to kind of think about or contend with. One is that right from our, from our last comprehensive plan, and I think almost anybody that you speak to, our constituents, would express a strong preference for small-scale development over large-scale development. But when you need hundreds of units, there's a, there's an inherent conflict. And also that we do as much as possible within our existing housing stock by adapting and reusing and working with what we have, rather than changing our physical landscape too dramatically. And as I mentioned briefly, the market forces are force-moving in one direction. And then we, I think collectively, want to do things to help shape and direct or redirect where some of this production inevitable or otherwise is going to take place. And finally, and I think it's apropos, the previous folks and your earlier conversation, the limited number of sites that we have to consider, and not only their suitability, but the competing uses, economic development, housing, and schools. And that's, again, going to have to work its way through public processes and debates that the HAB will be involved in, but it's, it's well beyond our total realm to arrive at those answers. We hope that the consultant that we've hired, if you, if you're not familiar with them, it's RKG Associates, and it includes MAPC, and an old hand in our own planning department, Jennifer Goldson, is going to be working with us. And we've given them very strong direction that it isn't the plan and the document that we're hiring them for. It's mainly the public prospect, process, the engagement and the facilitation, and even taking some bullets if they have to, to get to the right end. We want to have a sequence in that, that work plan over the next six months. There'll be a kind of a pro forma development of market review and housing needs. Our own staff has done that and probably could do that pretty well themselves. But the second two phases, one is developing the criteria and priorities for the criteria of where affordable housing, in particular forty B-type housing, is best suited and where it's not. And then identifying the sites themselves, and hopefully at least getting a start in community buy-in, so by the time it inevitably comes back to you, before the whole plan is sent up to the state, that you have some, some more support than opposition, I guess, is an optimistic way to put it. I don't want to wander on too long on this one thing, but that's, that's kind of where I see the current, the current state of affairs. Town-owned property is going to be one subset of that, that we're going to want to take a special look at, and in particular, the potential for current surface parking properties, or at least some of them, and evaluating their suitability for affordable housing, and particularly for senior affordable housing in kind of a smart growth concept. You've heard of forty, chapter forty R, that'll be part of the study. We don't know exactly if and how that'll fit into an action plan, but we'll hope to have some answers on that for you.
Just to be clear, the housing production plan, in order to give us at least a short-term safe harbor, one, has to identify sites that we would be willing to accept some development on. And then, two, we have to be able, we have to produce the housing in order to get the safe harbor. So those are two quite large hurdles. Identifying sites in advance is hopefully, that's where the public process comes in, because we would be, we would be stating upfront that if housing were proposed on this site, we would try to facilitate the permitting process, at least from, from a town perspective. So in order for us to make that kind of commitment, I think we would need some citizen buy-in in order to be in a position to say that. So
And we're hopeful that the plan will not be so narrowly focused in black and white. These are the sites where this will take place to get to this percentage. But to identify a wider range of ripe locations that will be, that meet the criteria, and may even just stop there. They meet the criteria, and it implies they'll have a relatively friendly reception without a commitment.
Yeah. Yeah, I, several years ago, when there was a, there was a, it was on the ballot, I don't know what, I forget the term, the recall of forty B kind of thing. I remember talking with one of our representatives in state government and saying, you know, and he was asking me not to come out publicly in support of getting rid of forty B. And I was saying, well, you know, but tell me you'll fix it. Because I think frankly, that for one thing, that only requiring twenty percent to be affordable is ridiculous. You know, our inclusionary zoning is fifteen percent. So for, for doing an extra five percent, they then can, you know, totally stampede over our zoning bylaws and create traffic problems and whatever. But, but of course, the most significant problem is, and this is, I think, another big problem with forty B, is that they don't give any consideration to its effect on your schools. You know, we're just obligated to educate all the kids who are here. And there's no consideration given in that, in forty B, to problems we might be having, being a community that doesn't have a lot of land to build new schools, to take care of those problems. So I, I just wonder if you have thought about that at all, if there's any sense in, I don't know if you're connected to similar groups to the HAB in other communities, if there's any sense that, you know, these are some problems that need to be worked on. And, you know, I think it will take more than me saying it to my state rep, because that didn't seem to be, get too much done on that?
Just several quick comments. As I think you know, some time back, when there was a committee to reform forty B, I got quite involved in an effort on Brookline's behalf, taking a selectman's vote and trying to run with it. And one of the things I learned from that, among several, was that the, the power for affordable housing at the state level is ninety-nine percent production. And so there really wasn't any appetite, despite the diversity of stakeholders at the table, to reform, even though that was the mission of the committee. And I came away thinking, the only way that there would have been to get reformed, and probably may be still true, is if that referendum had passed, then it would have been thrown in the legislature, and they could have reformed forty B and brought it back in a much better form, rather than letting it end completely. But they needed that kind of a hammer over the head to be willing to even look. On the schools
I'll tell you, if there was another referendum, I would support it this time around.
But as you remember, especially in Brookline- But as you remember, especially in Brookline, you would, it was not, you would be totally against affordable housing in any form if you, you know, took any adverse position on, on that referendum.
Well, I mean, you know, I, I, I think we on this board and you on the HAB have a very good record of supporting some good affordable housing in this town and using town resources to do so.
Right.
You know, I think we've gone above and beyond what many communities have done. And so I, you know, I, I, I'm not going to accept the, the label that I'm against affordable housing because I'm not.
No, no, and we, I think many of us feel that way. As far as the school part goes, I, I don't know what the chances are of changing the formalities of that, but you've probably heard of chapter 40S. It's 40R and 40S, and I guess the S stands for schools or students. There is a, a, a way to develop smart growth zoning with chapter 40R and we've only begun to, to look at this, where you can get some per pupil reimbursements from the state for accepting affordable housing development. But I, I think it's, considering the cost per pupil, it's a relative drop in the bucket. And the other thing, we are undertaking, the other part of the Warren article last spring was this outreach to other, other communities where the letter went out to a dozen other communities, not on the school part particularly, but to try and get some state regulatory, more little friendlier attitude towards densely built communities with so few sites. And we are getting a kind of a trickle of responses back. I've had a chance to talk to a couple of them. Arlington sent us a letter that puts them solidly in the same camp and perspective as, as we have, for example. So there's still a, a long shot chance we might get some hearing up at the DHCD.
So I'm not exactly sure how to ask this question, so bear with me for a second. The, the Greater Boston Foundation puts out a, a report and has so for the past 13 or 14 years about housing in, in the Greater Boston region. And fortuitously, the 2015 edition of that report came out, I think, just last week. So I'm wondering if, if our housing expert, the eminent Mr. Blood, can comment on some of the things that, that the, the report concludes and their applicability to Brookline specifically as opposed to just the region. The report actually comes up with, I think, eight recommendations on how to fix housing in, in Greater Boston. But just to walk everybody through it a little bit, we're, we're simply not creating enough housing units here and that's why we're seeing housing be so expensive and the struggles that I think we're having region-wide with creating what some people call workforce housing, but is also referred to as housing for low and moderate income individuals. You know, the, there's clearly not enough housing being produced, which means that rents are, are going up and, and part of the, the conclusion to this report is that the, the cost of developing the housing is just so bloody expensive, both in terms of land acquisition costs and the costs of permitting and of construction. And that's what's driving high rents and, and at some level, I think, driving the, the, the move in this community towards 40B. It's a, it's a predictable outcome. It relieves some of the zoning pressures. So with that long setup, I'm wondering if you can sort of comment on, on maybe two of the, the eight recommendations that the report makes. One about creating an incentive for communities and nonprofit organizations and businesses to donate land or partner with a community to create affordable housing or mixed income housing. And another, doing some work specific to, to young professional housing or smaller household housing, to, to think creatively about that.
First of all, I'm going to disappoint you about the expert part. Thank you for bringing that report to my attention today. I had read or looked at the mayor's, Mayor Walsh's housing plan that came out some time back, but I, I wasn't, I wasn't familiar with, with this one until you brought my attention to it. So thank you. It's, it's an interesting work and it has been coming out annually and Professor Bluestone is, is, is well-known for his work in housing.
Yeah, and I should, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we should give some credit to, to Bill Relt, who is a, an expert in 40R, I believe, at the state. And he contributed to this, this report. So a town meeting member, another example of Brookline people turning up in maybe unexpected places.
A neighbor, a neighbor of ours.
Absolutely.
I, I saw his name on the, on the heading and, and you may know that, that the HAB invited him for a presentation several months back on, on 40R to kind of kick off that subject for us. And he is, he and his skills are readily available to the, to the town, so it, it is a good match. Brookline is pretty rich in that regard.
Absolutely.
As far as the, the donation of, of land, that's not something I'd, I'd given a lot of thought to. It's if, if a willing donor were to be identified, I'm sure that we would do everything we could at the HAB level and at, at your level to, to try and induce them to, to provide that kind of value, value to the town.
We're looking for a site for a school.
Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll make a pitch for affordable housing as the recipient first. But on, on the, on the second one, I, I, I think that's an interesting finding and a recommendation, and they're talking regionally, but it's something for us to think about here. As, as you know, they, they identified several mismatches or things that were, that they felt like were out of sync between the housing stock and the market versus the, the changing demographics. And that's a very interesting one. We, we do have a, a number of areas of concentrated three-deckers, two and three-deckers still. There's no longer an association of twos and threes, but the, the housing is still there. Neil, you live in one area, I'm, I'm right on the edge of, of another. And that transition from, you know, larger working or workforce families has, has, has largely happened already in many of these, in many of these areas. But the, the units are still pretty large-sized and I think we know there's a lot of doubling and tripling and quadrupling up in, in the large units, which some neighborhoods and families see as, as a negative force on the, on the neighborhood. The, the idea of micro housing, it, it's a, it's a kind of a buzzword now and, and they, they, the report added to that with something called, I like this one, the millennial village, is, is worth, worth our taking a look at. It's, 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 as you know, units that are 300 square feet, 350 square feet, maybe for one, one high-income professional who has a job typically very nearby. There may be shared kitchen facilities. The ones in the seaport have some special relationship to the restaurants where they, they get the, the buzz in their apartment when the table is ready, you know, across the street. So we, we probably should take a look at whether that kind of housing and zoning for that kind of housing is something that would fit Brookline and that Brookline as a, as a larger community would, would want to have. There's clearly, if you look at the statistics and, and we've, you know, had, our housing division staff, which has been terrific, has, has parsed a lot of this, that, that household size is getting, household sizes are getting smaller. And whether we would want to, we would probably have to zone or do, you know, again, a special overlay or make it part of a 40R to, to bring it in. Otherwise, a developer is going to take a, a parcel and do what, you know, whatever they think the market is going to bring the biggest return for. But I think that, that the two areas, and I, if I, I'll take the liberty of jumping to one of the others they, they mentioned as being out of sync was the, the aging baby boomers and the, the aging in place and the need for another type of small unit, which is the, the accessory housing, accessory dwelling units, which we, we had a run at here in Brookline, tried to get a zoning change maybe five years ago and didn't quite have it or the, the community wasn't quite ready for it. So those two types of housing, and I might add, they aren't, neither one of them are specifically affordable housing, especially the latter, the, the accessory units. But they are lower-cost housing and they're housing that is designed to suit a particular need that, it extends from the region probably right into Brookline. Did you want to pursue that further or does that address what?
No, I mean, it sounds like the overarching question was intended to be, are the conclusions of this report true for Brookline, as true for Brookline as they are for the region? And it sounds like to some extent they are and there's, there's work to be done. We can take the, the conclusions as sort of a model, as a roadmap for some areas to explore and have further conversations about.
They are to, to some extent, but I, I guess I took exception in terms of one, not that they're wrong, but the whole idea that, that starter homes have to be emphasized, small lots, smaller houses, I think a lot of that was directed at outer suburbs that have been less friendly and accommodating to multifamily housing and, and high-density zoning without 40B.
That's fair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blood. Thank you for re-upping. We're glad to have you. And we're not making the appointments tonight, but you'll hear from us.
I just have one other question. We've got one in particular, a really good candidate, and we don't have any slots assuming we reappoint you. And I don't, I can't remember whether HAB is one of the boards that's set by bylaw or, are you interested in having auxiliary members or, or some kind of, or enlarging the size of the board, you know, if we come across a good candidate?
We, we are set by bylaw and, and the, the current HAB is, I mean, the, the bylaw specifies not only who appoints and where they come from, but the, the desirable skillsets. And I'm, I'm, I'm the only one that lacks one of the target skillsets in a way. But I mean, we've got professionals on there in architecture, law, finance, development and programs. I mean, it's, it's a, and I, I, I did, after you had your interview, had a long conversation with the candidate you're referring to, who was, was, was an attorney, a real estate knowledgeable, had been the commissioner of DCAM of all things.
Right.
And I encouraged her, hopefully this wasn't too presumptuous, to, to look at other possible boards for appointment. And I mentioned the, not, not just appointment, but the Housing Authority, the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals, probably in reverse order.
Okay.
Sure. Okay, thank you, Mr. Blood. We have another interview, I don't see Peter Kleiner. I guess we'll do Mr. Kleiner another time. Okay, we're running about 15 minutes late. We have some license items on the agenda. So the first one is the question of approving the application of 1020 Commonwealth Donuts LLC Doing Business as Dunkin' Donuts, David Carvalho and Jessica Muller, managers for a common vittular application at 1020 Commonwealth Avenue. Come on up, join the party.
My name is David Carvalho. My sister, Jessica Muller, we are the franchise owners of the Dunkin' Donuts at 1020 Com App. To tell you a little bit about ourselves, we are small business owners. Our family has been in the Dunkin' Donuts system for over 35 years. We're second-generation franchise owners in the business. The intent, we recently purchased this location. The intent for operating this location is that there'll be no changes, no changes to the hours of operation, no changes to the operation, no changes to anything on the existing CB license. Other than that, I thank you for your time.
Any questions from the board?
I have a nitpicky question.
Sure.
I'm wondering if the sidewalk in front of this, this location is Boston or Brookline? Yeah, that's what I thought. Just for my colleagues here, the reason I ask is, on the cover page of the materials, it says there's no outdoor seating, but if you go to the photograph in the back, there's clearly outdoor seating. And my suspicion was that it's not our sidewalk to, to do occupancy for, so.
And I had made a mistake on the application. I actually included the outdoor seating and I was, I got a call that the sidewalk is in fact Boston, so the seating is part of Boston.
Right, so I, I don't know whether they have any kind of permitting process for outdoor seating, but if they do, you're going to have to talk to them. So that's the, the problems with dealing some, with something like right on the border. This is not a public hearing, but we always welcome members of the public who wish to speak to this. And I don't see any, any other questions. Therefore, I will move that we approve the application of 1020 Commonwealth Donuts LLC Doing Business as Dunkin' Donuts, David Carvalho and Jessica Muller, managers for a common vittular application at 1020 Commonwealth Avenue. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Good luck.
Thank you very much, board. Have a good evening.
Next application is the question of approving the application of American Juice DBA T-Bar. Xing Ming Bing, president for a common vittular license at 1038 Beacon Street. So how, how bad did I do with your name?
He's good.
Okay.
Just, just perfect. Let me introduce myself. My name is Andrea Call. I'm the paralegal attorney for his commons office. Tonight, I'm here to represent the applicant. You pronounce better than I am. I will call him Adam Bing, who's the manager of the corporation. Our proposed application is for a common vittular license for the operations of, actually just a long alcohol beverage service shop. We will provide long alcohol beverage, just night fresh juice, smoothie and some kind of healthy drink to the community.
This is non-alcohol.
Long alcohol, definitely. And our proposed hours of operation is from 9:00 AM to 12:00 midnight. We will have 10 seats inside the premises and four outside seating provided to, provided to the customer. We'll be happy to answer if the board have any questions.
I, I just, I'd comment, I see that you have a, a lot of your, your juices or smoothies have kale in them. And I recently heard that Tom Brady, who lives in Brookline, likes to drink stuff with kale in it, so who knows?
Your next door to, or a couple of doors down from a restaurant that recently went through a licensing hearing here, that was, that filled the room. So the fact that the room isn't filled is a good thing, I guess. And I notice this is actually a reduction of hours from the, what was there before. So you're going from 9:00 AM to midnight and the business that was there before went from 6:00 AM to midnight. Okay. Any questions from the board?
I'm wondering if there's a, a decision from the Zoning Board of Appeals on this location from years ago related to handicapped accessibility. Does anybody know the answer to that? I don't see it in the letter.
It's not in Mr. Bennett's letter, I, I don't know. He usually is very careful about identifying.
Well, he, he, he says the premises conforms to the pertinent provisions of the state building code for used as a restaurant, so.
Well, I can ask him, but usually he will identify a special.
The, the reason I ask, and I'm entirely possible I'm mistaken, is when we did a CV license for another establishment in Brookline Village to add some seating, there was an issue with handicapped accessibility to the restroom. And I happen to know that this location is down a few sets of, sets of stairs, so it's not accessible and I'm sort of wondering if.
Excuse me, I, I don't believe we are adding any seating. We are having the same seating as the temptation has before.
Right.
Yeah, we are, we are sticking with the same seating even as our, so I don't recall there are any zoning issue.
I'm referring to a different case, a different license that we issued. And I just remember handicapped accessibility was something that came up.
Yeah, I think I know what you're referring to, yeah. I think there was some significant renovations that would have triggered this.
Okay, okay.
As I said in the prior license, this public, this is not a public hearing, but I'll welcome any members of the public who wish to speak on the license, and I see none. Therefore, I will move. Therefore, I will move approval of the application of American Juice Inc., doing business as T-Bar, Adam Bing, president for a common vitular license at ten thirty-eight Beacon Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
The next item is the question of approving the application of PR Restaurant LLC doing business as Panera Bread, David Peterman, owner for a common vitular license at, up, at eight 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 Commonwealth Avenue. I was reading the wrong one, but it's the same applicant. Welcome.
Welcome.
And you are?
I am Joshua Brown. I'm the general manager for that Panera Bread location.
Okay. And that's an existing location?
Yeah, I think it's seven years old. They changed ownership from LLC Panera Bread to this franchise group in July. But otherwise, all operations are the same as they were at the beginning of the year.
So you're not planning on making any changes?
No.
Okay. And the hours are the same?
Yes, sir.
So it was independently owned and a franchise?
No, it was owned by Panera Bread LLC, the corporation, and it was sold to a franchise group, PR management, in July.
Any questions from the board? Any members of the public wish to speak on this license? I see none. Therefore, I'll move approval of the application of PR Restaurant LLC doing business as Panera Bread, David Peterman, owner for a common vitular license at eight 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 Com Avenue. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And the next application is the same ownership, question of approving the application of PR Restaurant LLC doing business as Panera Bread, David Peterman, owner for a common vitular license at two ninety-nine Harvard Street with outside seating for twenty.
Hi, how we doing?
Hi, and you are?
My name is Jim Russo. I'm the general manager at the location at two ninety-nine Harvard Street.
Okay, this is right in the center of town.
Cool, it's cooler. The heart and soul of Brookline, Mass.
So are you making any changes?
Same exact, hours of operation, nothing changes, still Panera, still Panera, just the guy receiving the check is different.
Were you the manager under the old?
Yeah.
Oh.
Both of us are the same. They didn't switch anything, just again, the corporation wanted some more on the franchise side, so someone bought all of Boston, all of Mass, actually. So now owned by two local guys. Actually, the owner was local as well. Ron lives right here in Brookline, the CEO of LLC, so.
How many products with kale do you have? Just kidding.
Many products with kale. Kale's been trending long before Tom Tom has been eating kale, I'm sure.
Anyone, any questions from the board? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this license? Okay, therefore, I'll move that we approve the application of PR Restaurant LLC doing business as Panera Bread, David Peterman, owner for a common vitular license at two ninety-nine Harvard Street with outside seating for twenty. And the outside seating is actually in the patio, but I guess we classify it as outside seating legally. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Good luck.
Thank you all. Have a good holiday.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is the question of approving the application of Lee Oriental Pearl Inc., doing business as Oriental Pearl, Poi Ling Lee, president for a common vitular license at two twenty Washington Street, and this also includes an entertainment license to include television.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
I'm the president of the Lee Oriental Pearl, I N C. We are purchasing the existing business of the same location. It's been existing for years, and we're keeping everything as it is.
I have a question on this one. I don't want to jump ahead of anybody else, but I am a little bit confused by the hours of operation at this.
Oh, yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify as well. Brenda, who worked with me on the application, she actually brought it to my attention. I didn't even know. I'm really new to business, so sorry. So our dining operation hours are whatever I, actually exactly as I put in on the application, but however, our delivery hours, it's an hour later than what we have on the application, if that makes any sense to you. So I have Monday through Thursday, eleven thirty to ten thirty, eight, uh, PM. Is that what you have?
Yes, that's what the application was for.
Okay, and Friday and Sat-, Friday through Saturday is eleven thirty to eleven PM. And then Sunday, we're working two PM to ten thirty PM.
So you're saying that delivery would take place?
An hour.
Till eleven thirty, Monday through Thursday?
Exactly.
And twelve on Friday.
Saturdays.
Friday and Saturday.
And Fridays.
Well, I think we have had some issues in that area, because there are residential sort of above some of the stores, so I don't, I don't personally think these hours, what you're saying is too late, but we wouldn't want you to go beyond that for the delivery.
Okay, if that's what, yeah, that's fine.
And I think the license should reflect that.
Right, that's, that's sort of what I was thinking as well. I actually checked in with Brenda on this. I'm probably the reason that she called you. Because, first of all, I think the license should reflect the hours that the restaurant is open till, but it appears, based on the menu that's in our packet, and we're looking at page fifteen dash twenty-five, that this restaurant has been opening, staying open until twelve thirty on Thursday, Monday through Thursday, one AM Friday and Saturday, and twelve thirty on Sunday. So they've wholly been outside of their licensed hours of operation, and I want to make sure that we get the right hours on the license, and everybody understands what, what they're allowed to do.
So you stayed on the, on the menu that's in here that...
We don't have a no menu just yet, but the one that you have, it's from the owner.
Right, so you'll, you'll, you'll put the correct hours on it.
That's right.
And you're gonna, this is kind of Vietnamese. Your emphasis is going to be Chinese?
With kind of Asian, like, different kind of Asian food.
Fusion, I think it's called, yeah.
Vietnamese, Chinese, a little bit of Thai, and yeah, all kinds.
Okay.
So I don't know if we can extend the hours without the application, because it's been noticed?
No, it's not, it's not a public hearing.
Okay.
So I think you have the discretion to do that, if you wanted to.
So how would, so how would, so what, how would the motion be?
Well, I, I think the license should, we put the hours in that she wrote down, and then we say all deliveries are to stop, no, one hour later than the closing time.
In restaurant dining to end at the hours in the, in the application.
So it'd be ten thirty, eleven, and ten thirty, and then delivery can extend an hour beyond that?
Yes. But I, I think the license has to...
If you'll let me clarify, actually.
Sure.
So we stop taking orders within the operation hours, but then just the delivery hours has to be extended for a bit, just because when we taking the order, let's say, we have our last order at ten thirty, and then what it actually get out, it might be eleven already after we cooked it, so that really...
Everybody calls you five minutes before.
Yeah, I'm sure they all do.
So I think the license has to read with the longer hours, but there's got to be a condition on it that says that in restaurant dining ends an hour before the termination.
Okay, so we, so it would be the hours of operation, eleven thirty to eleven thirty, with in restaurant dining ending at ten thirty?
Yeah, I'm sure there's a more poetic way to phrase that, but...
I'm not good at poetry.
I think we need prose here.
Yeah, okay. So this is not a public hearing, but I will welcome anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this license, and I see none. Any other questions or comments?
I will just say that I think the, I think, if I remember correctly, that the prior license holder ran into some trouble with the health department at one point, and I just urge you to be careful about that, because you get a reputation, you know, and then people are hesitant.
Um, well, I worry about that problem, so I'll take care of it.
Okay, so I will move approval of the application of Lee Oriental Pearl doing business as Oriental Pearl, Poi Ling Lee, president for a common vitular license, and I guess at this point, we insert the condition on the hours of operation from eleven thirty AM to eleven thirty PM.
Monday through Thursday.
Monday through Thursday, Friday and Saturday, eleven thirty AM to midnight, and then Sunday, two PM to eleven, to tenth, to eleven thirty PM, with in restaurant dining to end one hour prior to the closing, stated on the license. And if you come up with a poetic, a poetic way of stating that on the license.
I'll work with Kate on that.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I will move approval of the application of Lee Oriental Pearl Inc., doing business as Oriental Pearl, Poi Ling Lee, president for a holder of a common vitular license at twenty twenty Washington Street for an entertainment license to include a television. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. You have a good day.
Happy holidays.
You too. We have another, we have a food vendor license, question of approving the application of Zing Ming Inc., doing business as Hong Kong Cafe, Ming Hua Chen, president for a food vendor license at thirteen ninety-one Beacon Street.
Hi, good evening. Again, my name is Andrewia Khor. I'm the paralegal of Attorney's Commons Office. Today, I'm here to represent the applicant, Ming Hua Chen, president of the Zing Ming Inc., doing business as Hong Kong Cafe Restaurant. The proposed application is basically just for the change of ownership. They are taking over an existing restaurant, Hong Kong Cafe, keeping the same hours of operation, seven days a week from eleven to two AM. The establishment has no seating at all, so it's just for takeout and delivery service. Similar to the prior applicant, we, we have a little, the prior, not us, the prior owner has a little bit issue with the health, health department, and we have already meeting with the health inspector to address all of her concern. We have confidence the new owner will be doing better work compared with the prior owner, and we will put their best effort to do all work in compliance with the health COVID regulations to their certification. So again, we will be happy to answer if the board have any questions.
So are you changing the menu?
No, they basically keep the same, same menu, same name and hours, just a new management.
Is there any relationship between the old management and the new management?
No, actually, no. They, they know each other. You know, Chinese, they always know each other, familiar, but they have no relation, well, they're not relative. They have no relationship, direct relationship, no.
Or business relationship?
No, not really. They just know each other.
So, and I presume, because your hours of operation are later, that you are, the deliveries need to end at the two AM closing time?
Correct, even earlier, as the kitchen may close thirty minutes before the closing hour.
Okay, if there's any members of the public who wish to speak to this application, now's your time. I see none. Any other questions, comments? We're ready for a motion. I'll move approval of the application of Zing Ming Inc., doing business as Hong Kong Cafe, Ming Hua Chen, president for a food vendor license at thirteen ninety-one Beacon Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our last license for the night is the question of approving the application of Chata Wasim Talib of a license to buy, sell, exchange, or assemble second-hand motor vehicles at seventy-four Regent Circle, and you're not going to be doing this, you're not going to be handling the vehicles at seventy-four Regent Circle, right?
No, I'm Chata Wasim Talib, good evening. Basically, I'm Boston Used Car. I'm wholesale, not doing a home, auction to auction, not a sale to home.
So we're not going to see a parking lot?
No, no, no. I buy to auction, example, Quenzi, sale to Linway. I buy Linway, sell to Quenzi, auction to auction, no sale to home.
So the license is just to do business transactions, not to, not to run a lot or store vehicles? You're just, you're just sitting in your home, making phone calls and doing paperwork? You're not taking receipt of the vehicles at seventy-four Regent Circle?
No, no. I mean, sir, I buy, go to auction, I buy car, and toing, deliver to Quenzi, and sell to auction, no, not home.
It's my understanding that the...
He needs an address.
You need, you need this type of license in order to be able to sell and buy at auctions.
Right, and we've seen one or two of these since I've been on the board.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Now, can you say your name again, because I still can't...
Chata Wasim Talib, my name, and my company name, Boston Used Car LLC.
Your corporate name is a little easier for us than yours.
See, it's spelled right up here, but this is, it's wrong.
Ah, okay.
So when we do the license, we've got to use the right...
Right. In, in our paperwork, they spelled your middle name W A S W W M. So I looked at that and I'm thinking, how do I pronounce that?
I think you missed it. My name, correct, W A S W E M.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's spelled correctly elsewhere, but just what I was reading from. Okay, so I believe there are no other questions, ready for a motion. I'll move approval of the application of Chata Wasim Talib of a license to buy, sell, exchange, or assemble second-hand motor vehicles at seventy-four Regent Circle. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Good luck.
Thank you, sir. Everybody, thank you very much.
Sure. And Mr. Klechner, we have a couple of appointments.
Yes, there, Mr. Chairman, there's two committees for your consideration. For the registrar voters, there's actually two areas that you're required to vote Democratic, somebody representing the Democratic Party and someone from the Republican. On the Democratic side, you have a, you're required to consider or to receive three names from the local party, and the party also recommends or identifies a... from the, the local party, and the party also recommends or identifies a preferred candidate, and in that case, that's Linda Goldberg. So let me read those names for you, you're selecting one of these names. Linda Goldberg.
Aye.
Aye.
Toby Warner, Laura Schlesinger. So Linda Goldberg would be representative from the Democratic Party, and on the Republican side, there are similarly three names submitted by the party, and with a recommendation that you appoint Peggy McQuire Shaw Road, so I'll list them in their order of use, she'll vote for one. Peggy McQuire.
Aye.
Jim Solverson, Jean-Sanat Florrie. So Ms. McQuire would be the applicant there. And for the tree planting committee, there is one expiring term, Mr. Madison is interested in reappointment, there are no other applicants. Hugh Madison.
Aye.
Aye. And that concludes the business of the board of selectmen for Tuesday, November twenty-fourth. Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, we should say to, to everyone who's watching, I hope everyone has a nice time with their family and a good dinner.
And welcome to all the visitors to Brookline.
Yeah.